Today's date is July 3, 2023. The time is six forty AM. This meeting has been duly advertised by the city's most favorite performance with the corporate tag being that of the Sunshine Law. Roll call?
Davenport.
President.
Fabelaro.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Kamona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Systrom. All of the tenants.
Entertainer motion approved in three days minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Mayor?
Devin Hausman.
Shift this way.
Okay, this is the office. State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. Aye.
Aye, Devin Hausman.
To solemnly swear or affirm.
To solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the government established.
And the government established.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Firefighter for the city of Pleasantville.
Firefighter for the city of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thanks, ready. Okay, you have to leave. Anything you'd like to say?
Sorry, mayor.
Okay, no, I'm just gonna ask the same questions. If there's anything you'd like to say. That said it all. That was awesome. Congratulations. Thank you, welcome. To these days. He's the first. Okay, we're gonna bring him back.
Did you want anything to say? Devin, say something.
Well, first off, you know, welcome to the Pleasantville Fire Department, City of Pleasantville. I think he's gonna be a very good addition. And he's gonna serve the residents very well. You're welcome.
Thanks. I meant David.
Oh. Thank you.
First agenda is ordinance number nine. First, do we authorize the acquisition of various capital equipment and completion of various capital improvements and for the city appropriate in the sum of $4,200,000, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds or bond anticipation notes of the city in the aggregate principal amount of up to $3,990,000 with certain determinations and covenants and authorizing certain related actions in connection with the foregoing. Ordinance number ten, second reading, public hearing will be held. Amending chapter eighty, article one, entitled alarms of the city code.
Any questions? This one here is. This one is this agenda and this agenda.
Ordinance number eleven, second reading, amended chapter thirty, article two, entitled fire department of the city code.
Any questions?
Order number twelve, second reading, other family held, amending chapter one thirty-five, entitled fire convention of the city code.
Any questions?
Resolution one oh three, providing for budget insertions into the 2023 budget.
Any questions?
Resolution one zero four, approving the transfer from Savers Collaborations LLC to FP Pleasantville Associates LLC under pursuant to the terms of that certain redevelopment agreement dated June the sixth, 2022, by in between sixteen, 2022, by in between Savers Collaborations LLC and the city.
Any questions?
Resolution one zero five, granting approval to society page in Espanol for Colombian National Day on July the twenty-third, held at the Langston and Tipton Avenue Ballpark.
Any questions?
Resolution one zero six, granting approval for the annual Atlanta City Triathlon event through the city on August the twelfth.
Any questions?
Resolution one zero seven, granting approval of a Latin music festival on August the twenty-sixth, held at the Langston and Tipton Avenue Ballpark.
Any questions?
Resolution one zero eight, granting approval for the Ironman Triathlon event through the city on September the tenth. Next is for the bill list.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy day before working for us. We'll look at the bill that we paid in the past council meeting. This council meeting, really the one that we look at mostly is the one down the bottom for wire transfers. You'll see one for two million five sixty-six. What that was, was the paint last, I guess it was last July, we borrowed two and a half million dollars for sort of infrastructure. What we do, we pay that back, at the same time borrowed another two fifty to offset the sixty-six thousand interest that we paid for the last twelve months for that borrowing. The next one is four eighty-five, was the cost for a medical cost for active and retired employees for a month. And then the five ninety-four payroll from last week, June thirtieth. If you look over in the bill to be approved, we're gonna start with number one, second one, number two, veterinary, Avtican Veterinary Hospital. That's a duplicate. There is one further on page four for Mount Laurel Veterinary Services. They are affiliated, and for some reason, two invoices were, two provisions were sent in, one for Avtican, one for Mount Laurel. When Saunders sent the bill last out, last Thursday, before I had to check it off for the special council meeting, when I came back down on Friday, I found it. But meantime, it had already gone out. So if that void, that will not be paid.
Is this for one animal or?
It was one animal that was in pretty good shape. One of our police canines.
Was he armed?
Yes. Two thirds way down, you'll see Atlantic County Charger. That is for fuel for the month of May. Gas prices are pretty stationary than they have been for a month or two. If you go over to page two, you'll see Edmund's GovTech. That is an annual fee for them hosting our information on cloud. This is a cost to us. They like to store their, our information on their computers. Our recommendation from our, from Jiff, as well as our IT people, is to move it off of their personal computer and put it up in their cloud where it's less likely to be attacked. So that's a fee that they charge us for hosting it up on their cloud. Wherever the cloud is, we don't know. The cloud is somewhere near. On page three, you'll see the fifth one down, Louis Ruzio. That was our hearing officer from last week when we had the mercantile concern. The bottom, next to the bottom one on page three, if you allow, we had construction. DEP kind of wrote us up for a drainage ditch behind Chattanooga. It had been overgrown. We had to take, it was a drainage ditch, and we had to take care of it through DEP, otherwise we would have had like a big fine for it. So we were able to find someone to take care of it. Lafayette was done within probably forty-eight hours. Page four, to come down, you'll see halfway down, reported way down to Mount Laurel, cost for the dog. And if you flip over to page five, third from the bottom, that is a fourth of final order for the fire department. That was put up by Seltzer, who we had doored. And they're all doors now working, assuming correct, Scott?
Yes, sir.
And they're all the same color before we got out of PCBS because it was hard to get part for it. So these are bills I'm looking for approval. Not a lot of them, because we just approved them, sorry, about ten days ago. So if you have any questions, you have an answer.
It's not a question, it's more so of a comment as relates to upcoming bills. Just so you all know, an update on the fire department because it's still, you know, we're getting to the season where it's getting very hot and humid out here. The compressor went out over the weekend at the fire department that supports the, where the firefighters sleep, so in their dormitory, there's air throughout the rest of the building. We've put in the mobile air units, so they do that air, but the air conditioning unit for that section is not operating. We had, that came in over the weekend, we went in, had it looked at. The contractors came in today, so we're waiting on a quote. As soon as we get that quote, we'll probably be presenting that before someone, whatever appropriate committee is, to probably get them in the unit. Because the folks that looked at it today, basically said the compressor, we just replaced that two years ago. So if it keeps blowing, it needs you blowing, you need a new unit. So I just wanna make everyone aware, in case we hear any concerns from the fire department, we are aware they do have air, it's not coming through the ducts.
That's a good question. The unit that we're looking to get is going to be one that's more, you know, can do more capacity than the one that's in there so that it doesn't continue to blow, because that's probably the problem.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do.
Make sure that we upgrade it.
If it's two years old, does there a warranty on anything?
The piece, yeah. So we are, we're looking at all of it, and that's a great point, thank you for that. But we're looking into all of that, and I would like to know. I just know we need to do something.
It was the compressor that was replaced two years ago without the entire unit.
Right.
Chair.
Yes.
Another question. For Fleischman Office?
These are all escrow, out of the escrow payments. These are for, I'm sorry. I guess I answered better.
Can we get the invoice on this bill, please?
Sure. And I don't know if you got the invoice. I sent out all of the invoices. Hope you're sure that we'll do those on a regular basis. Send out all of your invoices.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Any more from the public portion to speak on agenda items?
My name's Carol Micasano, and it's one zero two three New York Avenue. Nice to meet all of you. I haven't met a lot of you. Nobody goes around that outdoors anymore. Yeah, have you ever seen me? I've lived here for a century. You have, yes. To do with relatives on my street. And I know since drunk from a long time ago. So that everybody else, hello, welcome. That I don't know, or haven't met before. Like I said, I'm a resident in Pleasantville. And I have some issues about, I know we only have three minutes to talk. I didn't read that. First off, their place.
Is it on agenda items? Can you come forth if it misses? It's just agenda items.
Okay, so you want me to come back and run?
Yes, come back. Public portion.
It's only gonna be in a few minutes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, I didn't even know. That's why I waved my hand at. All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I wanted to thank the mayor and Mr. Looney for talking with me about your ordinance number nine. My question had to do with the amount that the bond is being funded for, when in the budget it indicated that we have a surplus. So my question is, why are we borrowing money if we have a surplus? So I know that Mr. Looney did speak with me about it, but I'd like if he would also address the public regarding that issue, if that's possible.
It's called by the public. The six hundred thousand dollars you see in the budget, as it was called surplus cash, that is money that was pretty much left over from the end of last year, after all bills were taken down. That is not, and we use that surplus, as we do every year, to offset the tax rate as much as we can. In prior years, it's been greater, been higher. I think two years ago, we had like a million dollars in surplus, and we moved that to offset taxes. So it is money, when it says surplus, it doesn't mean to have excess cash laying around. That is not used. It is used to offset the tax rate every year, as we, most municipalities do, to keep the tax rate as low as possible.
All right, and if I could just add, what is the interest on this loan?
We don't know. It will go out the bill. We still have the bill for that.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else with a opponent? Anyone else with a vote? I'm gonna see the motion across the public portion. Motion. Second.
Nothing at this time.
Nothing at this time.
I have nothing to add.
Okay, entertaining, closing. Work session. Set. On the favor?
Aye.
Sitting down, right?
Sitting down? Yes. Everybody sit up. You sit everybody. All right, everybody look at me. Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
You need me to send it to you?
Good job.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Again, this is City Pleasantville, City Council Mayor meeting. Today's date is July the third, 2023. The time is. The time is seven PM. This meeting has been duly advertised by the city's most favorite performance with the corporate tag being that of the Sunshine Law. Please stand. Education. Action. I put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, indivisible and just as all. Roll call?
Davenport.
President.
Fabelaro.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Kamona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Systrom.
Present.
All of the tenants.
Do you have anything else?
No, I guess, thank you.
Okay, first is ordinance number nine. First, meaning, authorizing the acquisition of various capital equipment and the completion of various capital improvements and for the city, appropriate in the sum of $4,200,000, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds or bond anticipation notes of the city in the aggregate principal amount of up to $3,990,000 making certain determinations and covenants and authorizing certain related actions in connection with the foregoing.
Questions?
I need a motion.
Motion. Motion. Second.
And second is?
Second.
Second, so noted. Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Fabelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Systrom?
Yes.
Ordinance has been approved for a second reading, which is scheduled July the seventeenth. Second reading, I'm sorry. Ordinance number, the first reading, so. So this has been approved for a second, for first reading. Second reading is scheduled for July the seventeenth. Ordinance number ten, second reading, public hearing is required, is amended chapter eighty, article one, entitled alarms of the city code.
Motion.
Second.
Public hearing.
This one requires a public, anyone from the public on this agenda? Order number ten. Motion. Second.
Aye.
Motion.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fabelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Systrom?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Ordinance number eleven, amended chapter thirty, article two, entitled fire department of the city code, public hearing required.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on ordinance eleven? This time? Motion. Second.
Aye.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Fabelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Systrom?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Ordinance number twelve, amending chapter one thirty-five, entitled fire convention of the city code, public hearing requirement.
Anyone from the public on this purpose as well? Motion close above portion. Motion. Second. Favor?
Aye. Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Fabelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Systrom?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Resolution one zero three, providing for budget insertions to the 2023 budget.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Fabelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Systrom?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one zero four, approving the transfer from Savers Collaborations LLC to FP Pleasantville Associates LLC under and pursuant to the terms of that certain redevelopment agreement dated June the sixteenth, 2022, by in between Savers Collaborations LLC and the city.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Fabelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Systrom?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one zero five, granting the approval to the Society Page in Espanol for Colombian National Day on July the twenty-third.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Fabelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Systrom?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one zero six, granting approval for the annual Atlanta City Triathlon event through the city on August the twelfth.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Fabelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Systrom?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one zero seven, granting the approval of a Latin music festival on August the twenty-sixth.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Fabelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Systrom?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one zero eight, granting approval for the Ironman Triathlon event through the city on September the tenth.
Motion.
Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Fabelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Systrom?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Need a motion to approve the billments?
Second.
Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Fabelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Systrom?
Yes.
Resolution approved. I need approval to approve the bingo of Rapalixis.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Fabelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Systrom?
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is public portion.
Next is public portion. You can come forward, man.
Hello again. Can someone tell me what zone or district that I'm in, and you and my councilor, first word? First word? Barclay?
Yes.
Okay. And Systrom and Davenport? Do you two have a card either? Because I know nobody hangs out at a city hall all the time. And I'm sorry. And I'm the councilwoman, I'm Ed Lawrence. Oh, thank you. I asked you for a card more finished, is that okay? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Pleased bringing you to here. I hope we get to talk, speak again. Okay? I'm on New York Avenue.
Thank you, brother.
Thank you. If not, skip, goes, Rico. Anyway, sorry. My first concern is what everybody else's concern in holiday areas, of course, the dirt bikes. So, being that said, our police department is doing a wonderful job in keeping. in keeping these people to a certain area and getting them off of our residential streets. My only problem is, is those bikes come down our streets and there are certain residents that are giving them gas for these bikes. Okay, I've seen it several times. I was not very happy with it, but I'm not a person that can go approach that person. So that would be a police issue if I called them by then, of course, they're gone. See, you know. And also, on the Lada Road, I heard, I think there's two, like, maybe automotive businesses there fixing cars. I've heard dirt bikes come out of there from getting gas and then heading on their way. They're right across from law lots. My other issue is that I haven't met anybody here, so it's very hard to get my thoughts together. Like I said, I've lived here for 50 years. I know the city somewhat in what and that out, you know? And I would like to know, is there more of a way to be kept informed of what is on the agenda? Like, the dump station over there from the ACUAs or something supposed to be going on? I was just now hearing about that. I didn't know that that was a possibility. I thought they were turning the place into a cannabis place. So, would you probably make more money because? But what do I know about taxes and stuff? We already pay them.
But they're both on the same site.
Oh, they're both going to be on the same site?
The one that was proposed and on cannabis. They're both in the same area, so you're right.
Oh. So it's gonna be a double smell. Okay. Well, don't give me that look. It's, yeah, I know you can't talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but yeah. I'm sorry, we closed down two concrete factories along there behind and now they're, you know, double stinky, stinky coming through. So I wanted to voice my opinion against that. I know it's not on the agenda, excuse me.
You can speak about anything that's down the chain.
Oh, okay, all right, good. I might be up. I understand. Also, I have, I do not receive a update. I'm supposed to receive, well, citizens are supposed to receive, excuse me, an update from the ACMUA about our drinking water that we're getting from the city. Every, every three to four months, we're supposed to be getting a notification on how we're doing. And like, what are the levels of any kind of toxicity in the system or anything like that? I haven't gotten one since 2019. Is this something we can look into? Because we do get water from these people, I mean.
You got this information from ACMUA?
Yes.
Oh, okay, because I'm not aware of this. It's nothing that the city is doing, I'm not aware of.
No, it sounds like a New Jersey American Water thing.
Uh, New Jersey.
That means I will certainly check into it and I'll just give you my card and you can follow up.
Please, yes.
Chairman.
Yes.
Ms. Carolyn?
Yes.
If you go onto New Jersey American Waters website, you can sign up for updates. They will just ask you for your name and your email address and they will send you updates.
Okay. On that point, there's a lot of people in my neighborhood that do not speak English, so they're not going to understand if they're at that site.
I think that site, it translates into Spanish as well.
But they're still not that savvy. You understand, I have older people on my street that I grew up around and they all know me since I was little. But they didn't even know. So, I mean, you didn't, your relatives didn't know that either, either. So. Just to make sure.
So we'll try to make it as convenient as possible, so I understand what you're saying, that's the accessibility. But the website, we want to get folks just kind of used to using the city's website. We can link the information to our site and it's a click of a button. So I'll look into all of this for you and get that to you.
That would be great, yes. And that report, I printed out the report from 2019. As long as it's going to do me now.
We'll get you the information now. We'll let you and others know how you can access the information.
Please. And if sometime I can see one of you guys come out the door.
You can hang over after meeting, want to contact.
Okay. I didn't know if you could.
See me over there all the time anyways.
Thank you, sir. Please, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Carlo?
Good evening, again, I do have one other thing to ask about. And it has to do with the invasive species of the spotted lanternfly. And I wanted to know, has Pleasantville accessed, there's apparently a $15,000 grant per municipality in the state of New Jersey to help combat it? So, given the silence, it seems like maybe you're not aware of it. Because I have quite a few where I live in a very wooded area in my house.
I just, I worried of it today. And it's a young lady named Ms. Rodriguez who's having a problem at her home. And she just sent me the exact same information that you have. And I was going to talk to her about that also, so.
There is a grant out there.
Yes.
And we definitely need to do something about it because it is really, really bad. The county got money also. And I felt they were going to distribute that.
So, and that's usually how it goes, so we'll touch base with them because just like mosquitoes or anything else, the county gets it and then we, you guys pass the resolution and then that gives them the authorization to come into your communities and treat accordingly. So let me just do some homework and I'll give everyone the information.
If I can add, right now, the spotted lanternfly, it's in its next phase. So they're black with dots. Then they're going to go to the next phase, which they turn red with the dots. And I just saw one in my yard. And then they're going to get the wind. So, they're early on now, so it's easier to kill them now. So we need to be on this right away. We can't let it go tomorrow. Thank you.
Well, not tomorrow.
Not tomorrow, no. Please, thank you so much. Make sure you get that money.
Ms. Peyton, I have another question about that subject. We have a young lady I was talking about, she's right next to three neighbors probably. So that was her concern, and she gave that to me this afternoon. I was going to talk to you about it earlier, but, you know, you need to look into that.
Typically, what they do is if there's an area of concern, you know, like I said, you all have to give them permission to come into your community if the county is aware. It sounds like they would be, but I'll check into that. But for any other issues, that's how it would work. So we would, the resident would be able to call us, we would call county and then they would come out and treat that area.
Okay.
That would be great.
I see him. Hold on to the other side. Justice, I have a question. Great City Pleasant. Mr. President, Councilman Sisstrom. I rise to, I guess you would say, not make an excuse, but certainly speak to the number of firecrackers that was shot last night. And you still think I'm sitting on City Council, nevertheless. The answer that was, that tonight, today, we expect extreme storms. And they wanted to get it in. Gee, I don't know how many called you guys, but I got called. And I really enjoyed the show from the hot basin. They did a good job. So I'm saying that because we don't want it to be, I guess, to known that you can just bang away on July 1st, July 2nd, and July 3rd. What they did last night in my sector of the community, and I'm here to just speak to it and apologize on behalf of those that keep. Secondly, they are to be different, but Mayor Judy and the King, I rise to commend you guys. Number one, you have perfect attendance. This meeting, the last meeting, and many others. So to my legislators and Ms. DeVina King, I love her quite a bit. I apologize to take it so much of your time, but she answered the questions. She made the answers because I say again, I get the calls. So, so Mayor, under your tenure, our community, I do believe that we are, we are doing great. It's outstanding. There's a hacking situation going on across the nation. And my son and I have been hacked extremely. And of course, it's caused us because we had to get rid of a lot of equipment. As you get your bills now, they will tell you, if anything looks strange, call them. The ways are in the air. And there are people that are sitting just playing with computers and getting into your system and making it very, very difficult. My last comment was, gee, you guys are out there. Even there was one car driver sitting one day, sitting, watching because they sit 90 feet from your property and steal your waste. And then you'll get a bill. You say, this is not me, but it's there. So I thought I would share that one less, but I need, least, I'm not going to say anything about the overpass, okay? Tonight, we're working on that. So, a good, uh, sitting. I know, my council is working too. But Pleasantville is on the move. I think that was on the campaign letter, that we want to keep our community on the move. And you guys usually come here to complain. No complaints tonight. So Pleasantville is great and beautiful and I hope that the media would address that and not stick an hour news at the bottom. Thank you and happy Fourth of July.
So can you just hold that out there? I'll say.
I have one more and just that.
Can you just hold that out there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I get a take, motion, close the vote portion? All the same. All in favor?
Aye.
I have a take. Okay.
I tried to put this off to the end because I didn't hold the public. But in our last special meeting that we had, we impressed a forensic audit that we wanted to do as a council. And I wanted to talk to us, to find out what do we need to do in order to get that done. So that's something that I think we all agree with that we want to do and need to know what's our next steps and then we move forward.
Well, it has to go out for RFP, even if it's under $44,000 because it's not a process by which you typically entertain. So in order to have a pool of professionals in that area, you probably would have to send it out for an RFP. But if you've never had a forensic auditor before, you have to pass a resolution which essentially approves an RFP. Once you do that one time, like normally, you know, you do your RFQs and you're going to RFPs for the basic professionals every year, you never have to do a resolution first. But if you've never done, had a forensic auditor before, and I don't know if you have or not, but just based on the feedback that I was listening to in the last meeting, it didn't appear that you had. So you would know better than I as well as the administrator and the mayor. If you have never had one through the process of an RFP, then you would have to pass a resolution essentially approving the RFP. And then the RFP will go out, you'd never have to do that again.
Okay. Can I get any feedback from Mr. Looney or Ms. Peyton? Have we ever had that done? If not, do we need to, you know, pass things so that we can get the resolution done?
We have not. We'll get with the solicitor and solicitors and others to see how to craft the resolution. And we'll take it.
Okay. All right, so that's done. Also, the last, our last meeting that we had, we had, I had brought up something about employee appreciation debt. And I think the mayor must have got things wrong because after I'd done my homework, we've never had that. So this is something that we as a council want to vote on. And Ms. Thomas has, Ms. Thomas has already taken it upon herself to get the flyer done. So all we want to do now is to make sure that as a council, we come up with a date and when we want to do it and get this thing done so that we can show some appreciation to employees and our community in the district.
So, um, so do you want to talk about like where?
What do we need to do? Like, do we need to vote on this now or, you know, what's?
Do any of that?
Okay.
No, I think internally, we can just sit down, you guys, you know, tell me like where and what date and what do you have and, yeah, all that good stuff. But there's nothing, I don't believe there's anything by, by vote that.
That means if you don't, okay.
But you said about a cookout.
No, 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 I said employee appreciation, that's, that was my specific words. That's why I said you must have got it. You got mixed up. That's. Also, I do have another concern. There's been something brought to the full body's attention about one of our previous firemen that has gone out on, we want to go into executive session so that we can discuss that. That's what we want to do. So I make a motion, go into executive session so that we could discuss that. Uh, subject.
If that's a proper motion?
All in favor?
If it's moved and properly settled?
Yeah, all in favor?
Allowed.
Excuse, excuse me, to the public, we are now going into executive session.
You know what? Just, you were in the middle of your comments. It's not a vote, so it doesn't make a difference in a parliamentary proceedings perspective. But you were in the middle of your comments. Did you want to finish your comment before you closed?
Yes, I finished my, I finished.
I have no record to say all of this. The issue of the employee appreciation, can that be assigned to our committee so that it doesn't talk about it all the time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let community handle it.
Any questions? I have nothing. Counselor?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and to say that we have a lot of good things going on in Pleasantville. You may have noticed on old Turnpike, they've started the streetscape over there with the lighting and the curtain and all. That's going to be really nice for this stuff. And also, we have our, I understand the generators have come in for our recreation center, which means that when we have an emergency, we won't have to go elsewhere for, you know, for emergencies. We have the generators now at the recreation center where we can have others come to us because before we were trying to utilize the schools and everything. So we've been waiting for that and I'm excited about that. And thank you, Mr. Harmon. I agree. Thank you. We are trying to, like I said, we're trying to highlight the good things that we're doing in the city. We're trying to get, and everyone have a good evening, have a happy Fourth. And we'll see you in a couple of weeks if you come.
Couple, a couple of weeks, about a week, week ago, we went to a graduation, graduation for was Haidel Institute. That's a fourth graduation, fourth graduation for young people, young people that signed up for this school. And they are, they get a chance to learn, not only to get a chance to learn what they're studying in, but it's entrepreneurship, and entrepreneurship of it turns into ownership. And a lot of times with young people, of course, just like everybody has been, you kind of try to find your way. But Haidel Institute has a way of putting together a program that helps, that really helps young people find their way. It's a beautiful thing. It's a beautiful thing, I left my pamphlet. Talk about all the different things at school, construction, computers, photography, videography, and things that make sort of the other company job. But it was, it was, it was a great graduation. They had it on the tent in the parking lot. I announced one of the topics and councilmen, the councilmen from here. We were here, we were there to celebrate them graduating and we look forward to good things. They even had two, two young men from the PMS, from, from the system they were locked up. They, part of that system, part of that program, helped them buy a food truck, they're in partnership with the food truck, fifteen percent for each person. And right, that's like a ridiculous fifteen percent for each person with the avenue five-year plan to actually own that truck. They're doing good things over there. And I remember when Hidel Institute really actually wanted to come into Pleasantville and grab that building, they actually learned, looked around in other communities. And those communities and leaders from those communities that denied them to come into Pleasantville, they now show up at our event and they talk about how beautiful it is and everything because that, you have to have a different alternative for young people to succeed in this world. Hey, nothing else with good and order, got the city Pleasantville?
I have to. I know that Ms. Carol, if you wanted to say something.
Thank you. Real quick, I just wanna say, I know everybody's doing the best that they can in the times that we're living in and everything. But I'm concerned with the shortages that at our Public Works Department. They need a lot of equipment that needs to be fixed, some has not been replaced. And they're trying to do what they can do, like the dirt bikes knock the stop signs down. They, they come out and they did within that same day, put a stop sign back in. But even though it was in a rim from a tire and cement, they did that. They took the time out to come and do just that, you know? And I appreciate that, but I want them to get the help that they need. They don't have employees to run the heavy machinery that's needed to dredge out our sewer drains, which are getting all backed up. You guys probably won't see it because we're at the, we're on the, yes, they, and so, they don't have any money for that. They used to, his name was Ralphie, he's his son. So, and also their police department. I would like to know, is it possible, I know they're not letting chase the dirt bikes, but can they get some sort of dirt bike or four-wheel drive? Because behind my house is all woods. And when the dirt bike people, I don't care if they're back there in those parking lots, I know they've done dirt, a lot of bad things back there and locking stuff down and everything. But besides that fact, that's, that's, that's a good thing for both of them. But, you know, I was hoping we get an area for them to go riding, since there's so many of them. But I know we do need more police and definitely more public works. So, if everybody, you know, can like put a word in, a word out, you know, anybody needs a job, I would greatly appreciate it. And I do appreciate you letting me speak again. Thank you all, it was nice to meet you all. Y'all have a nice Fourth of July. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take a motion to go into executive session. Motion. All, all in favor?
Aye.
All set. Second session.
Did, did, we paid for? Okay, and we were in executive session for purposes of discussing perpetual litigation and contractual matters.
It's time, I'm gonna take the motions.
What do you say, Chair?
Yeah, I do. If you guys have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion as purely a symbolic vote on the trash recycling center in Pleasantville on Levin Devon's Lane for city council to vote yes, no, or abstain on this purely symbolic vote.
And I don't want a symbolic vote to influence for, for, for no reason. And the reason is.
We in the middle of a motion. No, there was no second.
I'll second it.
So.
I didn't get a chance, I didn't know, I'll second it, I'm gonna be sure.
So, here's the problem, the chair controlled the agenda. And that's why I said he can say it if it's your decision, if it's out of order. I, I don't know what's going on until it happens in this regard. So, councilwoman has made that, that, that motion. He can declare it out of order. It's, it's his purview to do that.
I second the motion. I'm gonna declare it out of order.
Yeah, he has the right to declare it out of order if it's not your thing. But your, your motion and your second is preserved. Now, Chair.
Yes.
May I, I know that you've declared it out of order, but if it's just a symbolic vote, what's, what's the difference?
I was in the middle of my thought process and we kept it to this other discussion. I just think that me personally, as a, being, me personally being in this, in this seat for the past, not going to the three chairs, watching it was taking place and then getting counsel for the past D team, it all took place then. We gave an honor to our agreements. By giving honor to our agreement, twenty years, maybe, two hundred million dollars worth of development and moving forward.
But this is different.
It is different, it's not.
I personally find that.
So, makes sense.
What raise this significant toward, with, with city, to take a symbolic? Is, is it for the community?
To my conversation, I'm very hard headed. You know, take me right back to my conversation. We got our mental about that because we thought through what things that we had to think through. And this one, in this, in this, in this case, has already been passed. Now, it hasn't even got traction to come to, to like go to the planning board. But as I motioned towards the councilman, when we had a heavy discussion about it made by eleven months ago, he was in reference to attempting to try to pull it. And pulling that at that particular time would have put us in a situation of possible lawsuits.
Yeah, council, president, the, the public session, so. I understand you explaining, I'm just gonna question how you explain it.
Well, I wouldn't, my explanation is about to say against, stand on my ground and, so. Yeah. This, you know, this is something that really means a lot to me. A lot of you aren't from here, I grew up here. I know what a transfer station slash dump will do to the community. If you're talking about something that's gonna hurt the city, what's gonna hurt the city is having pollutants all over the place affecting your children, your community, and the people that wanna come in here and invest in your community. So, if you guys can sit here and say that your mind is not made up on something that's this important, then you know what, that's on you. Me, as someone who's lived here for basically all my life, I'm sixty-four years old, I've been here for sixty years, I've watched dumps in here, I've watched things go on that's not in the benefit of these people that I represent. And if you don't think that that's more important than whatever alliances you have, then so be it, you know? I still say, the councilwoman's motion, I second it, and I wanna take the vote on it. If it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. But at least the community knows that there are some people up there that cares more about their health and welfare than whatever else goes on here in Pleasantville. So, thank you.
Chair, can I just add something? I just wanna say that Councilman Batimio and Councilman Barkley, I think moving forward, you two need to, I guess, sit with Linda to get all the information so you can stop saying, you know, you don't have all the information or you need to see where we are in the process. Because like I said, you know, we've been going through this for over a year or two. But just get all the information that you need so you can make a sound decision.
Sure, okay, very personal, excuse me, please, of course. Actually, by recent, not wanting to vote on this matter is not about information alone, but I have a primary role and a letter of vote that we may, that may be making the final decision on this. And when it comes there, the community will know how I vote and they'll vote me accountable for that. But I'm not comfortable to vote on issues that have been passed and take a symbolic vote just to second guess what I'll be doing at the poll level. That's what my colleagues go to do. If I, if I, if I may.
Counselor. Can I? Yes. Something as simple as approaching to each other, communicating as council, communicating from, from a council president, can avoid all this symbolic stuff that we don't even know where we are. It's a matter of communication more than anything, you see. Okay? And I will do my homework, I will do my due diligence, I will sit and sit down with business administrator. And when it comes to my table, I'll hold information, I will take a true vote on it, not a symbolic. Because we, we take this role as council, every single issue we're gonna say, where symbolically we are, we vote here.
This is the first time we've ever had a symbolic. I've been up here for two and a half years and the first time we had a symbolic vote. So, it's not.
Chair, I'm gonna say something, Chair.
First of all, right, councilman, we gotta come to the chair. With Chair, let's speak. Yes. I just wanna say something. I've watched you guys sit here and resent a project that would have brought millions upon millions of dollars here and you didn't know nothing about it, but you said no to it anyway. And now, all of a sudden, we're sitting here when there's something that is about the health and welfare of your people and you wanna talk about you don't know, then you need to do your homework. You've been on this council for almost two years or two. Alright, listen, let's, let's all be straight. That's all I've asked you to do. Be honest, be truthful with what we're talking about. This is too important of a subject for us to sit here and play games and act like, you know, this is something that we haven't done. You've gotten resented something already. We're doing something that is in the same parameters of rescinding, but being that our attorney said that if we rescinded, that it might bring a lawsuit upon us, then that's why we're taking this precaution of making the community understand that we do not agree with it. And if it does move further, at least it's on record that we're saying we don't want this in Pleasantville. If it happens, then it happens, at least we all know how we feel. I'm already, I already gave my opinion, I already know how I feel. I voted no, Councilwoman Thomas voted no. The rest of y'all said yes.
Chair, I'm saying, I never say yes or say, or say no. All I'm saying, I don't see the benefit of a symbolic vote on this matter for the city of Pleasantville.
I just gave you the benefit. That the community know that you care.
A symbolic vote is not beneficial. My belief, symbolic voting is not beneficial to the.
Is that the community know you care?
Chair, you have three choices, yes, no, or abstain. That's it. Vote on it, vote your conscience, vote so you, when you put your head on your pillow tonight, you know how you voted. If you don't wanna vote yes, don't vote yes. If you don't wanna vote no, don't vote no. But there's always an abstention. That means to everybody, I don't have enough information on this to make an informed decision. So, just vote abstain. It will alleviate all of this, that's all we're asking for. Let it, you don't have to vote, Mr. Barkley, you can abstain on it. You can abstain on this.
Well, I wanna say something else. The president already said our order. I don't think we should be discussing.
President already claimed it's out of order. So, and, and, and I, I'm going to offer this and it's not gonna make everyone happy. They may be, first of all, you articulated your feelings with the record. But also, the only other happy median, which may or may not satisfy the body short of the symbolic vote, which the, the chair is not entertaining, would be to simply state your feeling on the record, which I believe that you've already done. So, you've essentially accomplished without going through the formalities of the, this symbolic vote.
You already said, what did you have to say? You voted no? At this time, we're gonna take a motion to adjourn. Motion. Second. All in favor? Let's go.